Good morning, everybody. I appreciate folks being with us today. We have what we call a full house. I noticed a large contingent of law enforcement, which means that there's been a threat against the building.
They're here to make sure.
Couldn't tease about that. First, I'd like to give Tony Vogel an opportunity to introduce a new member in your team.
Curtis Whitman comes to us from the city of Lancaster. At University of Toledo, a master's from U of U. He's on the job a week and a half, doing really well. He's the deputy director of finance for us. He has enabled a few things.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you very much.
Even though you're a Toledo, I know how you guy. Well, tell folks what you told me this morning, because I asked you where you were from, and tell us about yourself.
Yeah, I was born and raised here in Lancaster. Went off to college and see who was working for the city of Lancaster before this, and I get to share my thoughts with the county.
On behalf of the commissioner's office, we welcome you and look forward to working with you. I think the biggest problem you're going to have is keeping Tony in line. I don't know how you do that, but you'll figure it out.
Thank you very much.
He's going to have to be orientated, so.
Thanks for coming by today and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Quick programming note before our next item. I just want to let folks know that one of the commissioners has an obligation Columbus this morning with the governor. So we're kind of recalibrating our schedule a little bit to accommodate that, which will include moving up our timeframe for our voting pattern and reorganizing some things. So your courtesy and patience on our need to recalibrate our schedule a little bit is appreciated. Next on our agenda, the commission is thrilled to have with us this morning Commander Lowe from the Major Crimes Unit, and he's going to give us the current in terms of what's going on there with the Major Crimes Unit, how things are coming along. How are you doing, sir?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. Good to have you today.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I didn't realize I was going to have a full house. The time I've been here, you know.
They're all here for you.
They're all here for me. Thank you. So currently at the Major Crimes Unit, which for those that aren't aware is a multi-jurisdictional law enforcement task force. It's a collaboration of law enforcement agencies here in Fairfield County, Pickaway County, parts of Hockney, and parts of Athens County. We have 10 sworn and 2 million personnel, including our peer supporter. Fairfield County is our fiduciary, so they handle all of our financial needs, which we're incredibly grateful for. The member agencies that participate in the task force contribute about $750,000 a year in salaries and benefits for personnel that are assigned to the task force. We really kind of have what we feel is a comprehensive approach to tackling drug issues here in Fairfield County, including long-term conspiracy investigations designed to attack the supply chain of drugs coming into Fairfield County. We have an interdiction, short-term investigative component that tackles quality of life issues in the community, and then we blended that with a very robust outreach program called Project Ford here in Fairfield County. About 95% of our activity is occurring here in Fairfield County, and our member agencies understand that drugs don't come from Athens or Logan. So if we're able to interdict those things here and cause impact in their communities by the work that we do here, that works for them. Our task force is solely grant-funded. Currently, we have eight grants that fund the task force, currently at about $1.25 million a year in grant funding that we're bringing into Fairfield County, largely because of the blended outreach program that we have in our task force, which makes us a little bit different than other drug task forces around the state in that we have really embraced that program, and I'll talk a little bit about that more. And in diversifying our operation and offering additional services to the county, we've been able to do that with more than 42% decrease in staffing since 2015, when I took over, when we had 21 people assigned to the task force. So just to give you a kind of overview of what we've been doing in terms of enforcement activity, 293 individuals indicted across the jurisdiction. And the thing that is most impactful there is about 62% of our cases are felony ones and felony twos, which result in long-term mandatory prison sentences, removing those supply-side folks from the community. You know, all told, that's about $80 million in drugs that have been removed or prevented from hitting the streets here, and I'll talk a little bit about trends that we're seeing. We also assist our partnering agencies with other investigative needs that they may have. In some cases, those are homicide investigations or serial rape cases that we've assisted with burglary and theft rings. We also offer a lot of technical surveillance equipment and other technical investigative expertise to those partnering agencies. So although we're kind of drug-centric, we also assist those agencies with those.
There are a couple of questions on the slide.
Please.
One, just a number that strikes me, and two, something up there, I don't even know what it is, but.
I'd be happy to.
15 pounds of fentanyl seems like a... And I'm not asking you to do the math, but I think if we did do the math and correlated that to the number of people that that could kill, it would seem that would be a high number.
It is an extremely high number and one that we're very concerned about. You know, just 15 pounds of fentanyl is enough to kill every man, woman, and child in Fairfield County, and then some. So it is certainly something that we have seen. It's a trend all across the state. We're starting to see it in other parts of the country, but here in Fairfield County, for example, we don't see heroin any longer. It's just straight fentanyl or fentanyl analogs and fentanyl compounds. So that's pretty alarming.
In spite of my vast experience with pharmaceuticals, I'm not familiar with psilocybin. I don't even know how to say it.
So psilocybin is a hallucinogenic. It's typically, if you've ever heard of mushroom, magic mushrooms.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, that's what psilocybin.
TMI.
Our narcotics investigator only wants to tell people. I'm referring, Commissioner. So, and we've taken about 200, well, we've taken 207 firearms off the street.
Thank you, sir.
So the enforcement work continues. I wanted to mention just electronic data exploitation. That's a big part of what we're doing now, as we see a trend by folks involved in criminal activity to really try to maximize technology to their advantage. So we have seen people migrating away from typical talking on telephones or text messaging and have gone to these social media and other messaging applications to communicate and conduct their criminal enterprise. We're also seeing a big trend towards people moving away from here and moving towards Cash App and Venmo and PayPal as other ways to transmit currency during the drug transaction. And that's presented some challenges for us. There's not a lot of evidence-based modeling out there yet on how to tackle that and try to interdict those efforts. Now, in terms of exploitation of that information, we certainly do that through the Major Crimes Unit. Our officers are writing generally four, five, six search warrants a week for electronic and mobile devices and extracting data from those devices. So for everybody that uses a cell phone or has access to one, please understand that even though you may hit the delete button, much of that information is never deleted. So in our investigations, we'll not only subpoena or write search warrants for cloud-based information, but actually take the data off of the devices and use that in furtherance for our investigations. So very helpful piece of what we do. We're using a lot of very sophisticated software programs. Some of this is being provided to us by the state of Ohio, the Department of Public Safety, at no charge. Self-Wright Premium, for example, is a software program. It's about $150,000 a year to access that data on phones. We have access to that for free. We are using some other technology here, though, like ClearView AI, which is a facial recognition software program. Scout PD, which is an app in space management, digital management system that has analytics. So they're using AI to actually search documents, information that we upload from those data extractions, and even video, for example. We had a case involving 94,000 video clips, including some from inside a defendant's home. And what took my officers about six weeks to review this particular piece of software was able to do it in two hours and found the same 54 videos that had evidentiary matters on them that we did. And then Penlake and Selhok, and we're providing all of those software applications to our partnering agencies at no cost. So the Sheriff's Office Detective Bureau and Lancaster PD's Detective Bureau all have access to these products to assist with their investigations as well. In terms of our outreach, last year, we had across the jurisdictions, 526 overdoses, 74 of those were failed. Project Ford, our outreach program, more than 500 engagements with people that not least survived overdoses, but people in the community that are identifying as having substance use disorders. We distributed more than 2,000 Maloxone kits throughout Fairfield County last year, and we're going to continue that program because we understand Maloxone saves lives, and we can't get people connected to treatment and recovery services and other programming if they're not with us anymore. So Malox boxes, we've distributed more than 40 of those across Fairfield County, and those are basically an opiate lifesaving kit that's mounted on a wall in an office or a building, much like an AED, so that if there was an accidental overdose occurred in that facility, they would have access to a Maloxone. And just to give you an idea of the scope of that, Cuyahoga County, maybe the most populated county in the state of Ohio, has distributed about 75 Malox boxes across their county, and we have 40 and plans for another 15 or so going out with our great partner at the Alamo Board. Tony is working with us on that. Last year, we provided more than $200,000 in recovery supports to our treatment and service providers, and those were from grant dollars. And those recovery supports allow people who are engaged in treatment to manage some of the small things in life that maybe we don't even think about, but might be something that could cause them to trigger and have a relapse and overdose. So we're very proud of the work that we're doing with our treatment and service providers. We have some great programming here in Fairfield County. We work with all of the service providers, and all of that is due to our great relationship with the Alamo Board, I see Marcy's here, and we're so appreciative for that relationship. We are, through that mentoring or the program, Project Ford, we have been asked to mentor other programs across the United States. So Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Dallas, Texas, and New Hampshire, we've been in those states, and we're mentoring a lot of programs here in the state of Ohio who would like to mimic the work that we're doing in terms of blending outreach with enforcement to have a more comprehensive approach. Very proud of Project Ford. They were named this year the best law enforcement-led deflection program in the state by the Ohio Deflection Association in January, so that was great. And we're getting ready to add fentanyl test strips to our harm reduction strategy. And basically, that allows folks that would be in a position of using illicit substances, they can actually test those with an at-home kit to see if it does contain fentanyl, because one of the things that we're seeing are these poly-drug mixtures like cocaine, for example, that is now very, very frequently being cut with fentanyl. So when you have folks that maybe are using cocaine and don't have a sense that they're doing anything overtly dangerous, overdose, they're dying.
Question on overdoses.
Please.
Has there been any, and Prosecutor Witt just arrived. Thank you for being with us today.
Absolutely.
And I'm curious if there's been any recent change in terms of the, I want to say, the resources that folks are able to dedicate to overdose investigations? Has that gotten started yet, or where are we on that?
Yeah, honestly, it's been, it's been, has not been a top priority during this first quarter. We had some staffing issues with attorneys, and frankly, the movement on that was stalled a little bit as a result of that. But I've spoken with Commander Lowe, and I intend to get that posted and moving here in probably the next 30 days and hope to fulfill by the middle of the year.
Please know the question was just curiosity.
Yeah, sure.
Criticism, because I legit didn't know where we were on that yet, so I...
Actually, yeah, we just, that was kind of on me, really, because we just had, we had some staffing issues with attorneys in the office, and we just weren't able to really get that posted and interview for that during the first quarter, but it's something we intend to do very quick.
Commander, please continue.
We've had some great conversation, Prosecutor Witt and I, about that position. We will certainly support his office and that mission in every possible way that we can through those other technology and resources. And then we're enhancing engagement strategies with the homeless population here in Fairfield County. The Ford team is out there a lot, working with local resources and meeting those folks where they are and offering services and making connections with them. So we're really proud of the work that we're doing there. In terms of current collaborative initiatives, we just had our canine replaced. We lost ours last year, or a year and a half ago now, to a promotion. So we were able to, through grants, replace our canine, so we have a new canine officer, a new member of the task force. I didn't include him on the, so I guess if we consider him sworn, gee, do you guys consider your canine sworn personnel? Are they on the staffing list? We have 11. So we were able to, through those same grants, provide canines and canine handler training to the Lancaster Police Department, and we're buying another dog and handler training for the sheriff's office. So we're very excited about that. That's a new program for the city of Lancaster. I talked about those investigative software programs that we're assisting our member agencies with, and we're in the process now of deploying 30 flock safety cameras across Fairfield County. Those are license plate reading cameras, and we are in working with the sheriff's office and Lancaster Police Department, are strategically locating those cameras throughout the county to provide additional eyes, if you will, out there for law enforcement. We understand, you know, in terms of staffing, it's a force multiplier for us, and it allows us to be more responsive to a lot of different criminal activity and to provide those investigators with some additional resources. So we're really excited about that program.
If I can ask a question?
Please.
There's been some label challenges on camera license plate readers. Is that still an issue or not?
It's not, and this company is the largest license plate reading company in the country. They have flock safety cameras located all across the state of Ohio, and by participating in this particular project, all of our law enforcement partners have access to the entire flock safety camera network across the United States. And just to give you an example of how that might work, if a stolen car was to come into the jurisdiction and pass one of these cameras, the license plate reader would take a picture of the vehicle, see the license plate, you know, instantly run it, and the officers that are out there on patrol would have that flock safety alert come across their MDTs, and they could interdict that stolen vehicle. Or it's what happened in the city of Lancaster now a couple of years ago, where the young girl, gentleman tried to abduct a young girl over on the west side of town. With these flock safety cameras, we would have had a picture of that vehicle within moments of that incident, happy to have been able to more quickly and rapidly respond.
Can I comment just real quick, just to answer your question to Commissioner Levacy? A lot of times what these cameras will do is when you don't have a suspect, like you don't know who you're looking for, these cameras and other investigative tools can help you identify who that suspect is, and then law enforcement can follow up and do some subsequent investigation to confirm that they have the right person. So for example, in this case, we're actually getting ready to wrap that one up, the one here in Lancaster that Commander Lowe referenced. They didn't know who they were looking for. They had a description of a vehicle, but they did have some surveillance. Those weren't flock cameras, but then they're able to hone in on a suspect and then go and interview that person, go and like, you know, interview people around that person, and then confirm that they have the right person by those means. So it's really kind of like a narrowing of the net and the scope, and you get kind of that person that you're looking for. It kind of culminates.
I think what Commissioner Levacy might be referencing, as I know there's been some question around the state nation as far as license plate readers being used for speeding or running lights or something like that, that's not what they're doing.
No, these cameras are all positioned off of the intersections or traffic lights. They don't have anything to do with that placement, and they don't record... All it does is take a picture of the vehicle and the license plate. Doesn't take any photographs of the people inside the vehicle. It's just a physical photograph.
Don, point of clarification, I'm not opposed to it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I think it's another tool law enforcement.
Yes, sir. We were happy to be able to.
It's all separate, right?
Yes, sir. It's $150,000 a year in resources that we were able to provide through our grants. In terms of current drug trends, really the big thing that we're seeing is fentanyl and methamphetamine here in Fairfield County and across the jurisdiction, and that's large quantities of both of those particular drugs and the poly-drug mixtures. So virtually everything that we're seizing out there has some other drug mixed in with it, whether it's methamphetamine having fentanyl or fentanyl analogs or new mixtures and analogs like zylazine and didazine, which are really dangerous. We're seeing all those things here, and I think over the course of my career, seeing poly-drug use is unusual, and we've seen that trend over the last couple of years now, where people are using both meth and fentanyl and have both available for sale.
I ask you a quick question here on how to...
Please.
As, and I know you're aware and other folks may be aware, D8 can basically provide a very similar experience to the user as D9 from a marijuana standpoint, and every shop of every kind all over our county is selling the D8. And I've seen some debate, I guess, over the legality, so to speak, of D8 versus D9. Is your office taking a position on that?
Well, our position is that when we are made aware or we learn of shops or retailers that maybe are selling products that are not in compliance with state law, we investigate those. Typically, we'll work with our partners at the Ohio Investigative Unit or the State Board of Pharmacy, who currently has enforcement over the marijuana, medical marijuana program. So yes, sir, when we have reason to believe that those things are happening, we're looking at that. I'm troubled by all of it. You know, I think when marijuana legalization has occurred across the United States, there was a belief that the big benefit, or one of the big benefits of that would be that we would eliminate the black market for marijuana, for example. And quite the contrary has happened. You've increased the black market with marijuana legalization. In our state, less than 20% of the people who have medical marijuana cards are purchasing their marijuana at dispensaries. That marijuana is being purchased on the black market, so we've seen an increase in black market.
Yeah, there's a lot to that, including the fact that medical marijuana costs twice as much.
It does.
But please continue.
And that's also kind of at the root of why we see so much meth and fentanyl available on our country today, too, because the Mexican cartels have about 40% of their profits tied up in the marijuana industry. And when that goes away with medical legalization, now you have to replace that 40% of your revenue stream, and they've done that through meth and fentanyl. So what comes next? I really want everybody to just understand synthetics are where we're headed, and that means synthetics replacing all organic plant-based drugs. When you think about heroin, for example, a kilogram of heroin on the street is about $65,000, and much of that cost is associated with the production of heroin. You have to plant acres and acres and acres of poppies. You have to hire people to go out and cultivate those plants and pick the poppies and process it into heroin. With fentanyl, it costs the cartels about $600 to produce a kilogram of fentanyl, and that one kilogram of fentanyl is worth about $1 million on the street. So it is a more profitable business for them to be in the synthetic market, and I think you'll see cocaine and marijuana eventually both go away and all of that be replaced by synthetics. And this is the business model. When we think of 2009, everybody in this room probably had a tube television in our home, and that was the best technology available. And then we saw the advent of the flat screen, the plasma television, and we were all wowed by this amazing technology that was, you know, just unbelievable product, but we couldn't afford it. Couldn't afford it. And then within a couple of years, they made those televisions, were able to mass produce them, and made them affordable for the consumer. So the consumer wanted it because it was a better product, and the retailers loved it because they were making a lot more money. Everybody in this room probably has multiple screens in your home of some kind, and the same thing is happening now with the drug industry. The cartels are making synthetics, and they're using synthetics and creating additional market share for themselves, and that's the direction that we're heading. I think that's probably it, right, Rochelle? Is that the last one?
On behalf of the commission and really the entire community, we thank you for your service and certainly for your time here today.
Yes, sir.
I want to give Commissioner Fix an opportunity to ask any questions that he may have at this point in time.
So Commander Lowe and I have the opportunity to communicate on a fairly regular basis. And, you know, we're up to speed on most of what you just presented. One thing I do want to mention to you, Dennis, is that I'm the representative for our seven county region to the One Ohio Board, and the One Ohio Board is just several months away from releasing $54 million to the various regions around the state. Still doing the work to figure out exactly what our region's number will be, but I believe it'll be somewhere between $3 and $5 million to be spent in our seven counties. I want to spend some time with you outside of this room encouraging you to have Project Ford apply for a grant from the One Ohio Board. So we'll have that conversation.
That'd be great. Thank you. We're around, that's one of my two times now, I was just looking for funding stream revenue, and I've been, you know, very fortunate to be able to find, you know, when I came here in 2015, we had two grants that funded solely enforcement here to about $200,000 a year, $225,000. So we are very blessed, and it's our privilege to bring those dollars back to Fairfield County and provide additional services. And do things that are different and it's out, you know, I know, Dr. Brown, you remember these conversations, who else is doing this? And is this going to work? And we didn't know. To your credit, as the board of commissioners, you allowed us to start that program without a lot of evidence that it was going to work or that it would have this kind of impact. And I'm telling you that it's having great impact in our community, and we're going to continue looking at housing challenges and transportation and other things that we can do to impact that, because we see better long-term outcomes, getting people off of drugs, getting people integrated back into their families, reunited with their children, and living happy, hopeful lives as opposed to sitting in the county jail. No disrespect to the chief, but that's an important place, and we're happy to send folks that need to go there, there as well.
Commissioner Levacy, any questions for Commander Lowe?
So one of the many boards and commissions I'm on is the Elder Abuse Commission.
Yes, sir.
And both the discussions we had yesterday regarding elder abuse take a couple of different forms, and one being financial, and there's a, many times, a direct connection between drug use and theft of money, the elderly. Is this something you've worked with our protective services on a regular basis or not?
I don't know if I would call it a regular basis, but we have in the past, when we have information or develops information through an investigation, that we have suspects that are, for example, living at home with an elderly grandparent or even a parent and are, what in our estimation is taking advantage of those folks. You know, we certainly have worked with JFS in the past on those, and we take that very serious. Yes.
You're on a little bit of a tight schedule today.
Understood, sir.
And I don't want that to be construed as a lack of appreciation.
Rochelle, I have to mark you in order to scroll slides, hustle through it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We are very thankful for you, Commander. Thank you for being with us today.
Sure.
Just so folks can have an awareness of what our schedule is going to look like here as we move forward, we're going to go to highlights of resolutions, and we're going to go to our voting pattern. Commission's going to stay down here for that. And then, following our voting pattern, we'll have public comment, legal update, county administration update. But following the voting pattern, there will be a brief recess, just because I know some folks got to go and Commissioner Levacy needs to get up to Columbus. So again, I just ask for your patience and your courtesy as we kind of modify the schedule a little bit to account for some of the obligations that various commissioners have. With that, I'm going to turn to Deputy County Administrator Jeff Porter for a brief overview on highlights of resolutions, please.
Right. The review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. There are 26 resolutions for the voting meeting. There's a resolution recognizing eight proclamations for May. May seems to be a good month for proclamations. Among those include Military Awareness Month, Older Americans Month, foster parent appreciation month, supervised visitation month, fraud awareness month, mental health month, Peace Officer Memorial Day, and Travel and Tourism Week, all very important. There's a resolution supporting a proposed bike route in the Buckeye Lake region, a resolution to allow for proper accounting to increase general funds, material, and supplies line. This is in relation to bringing the Fairfield Center online. The resolution to reappoint a court authority board member, resolution from economic and workforce development for an agreement with Ernst &amp; Young to provide a strategic workforce analysis and economic recovery plan for Area 20. Did you have any quick comments on that?
Oh, yes. It's a later study for a block funding area. It's funded through VLO funds for workforce.
Resolution from the county engineer to approve the contract bid award for the 16th road bridge. Did you have any comment?
Nothing there.
Okay. And then finally, we have a resolution from Lancaster Fairfield Community Action authorizing the release and satisfaction for community housing impact and preservation home rehab grant, and that would be the conclusion of our resolutions of note.
All right. Well, we're going to call our regular meeting to order. Please rise if you're able to join us in the pledge of allegiance and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, do we have any announcements?
You will hear a couple of times throughout today's meeting that next week's meeting is in this room, but it will be at 1:00 PM instead of our usual 9:00 AM.
Yeah, I could just touch on that as far as next week's meeting, be it an unusual time. All of we commissioners are also members of other boards. In this case, the Multi-County Juvenile Detention Center Board, which has a meeting that has to be at a certain time on a certain date, given the bylaws of that organization. And we'll be at that meeting Tuesday morning and then here in the afternoon for our regular meeting. Any additional announcements?
That is it.
Move on to the approval minutes for April 18, 2023.
I'll move.
Second discussion. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023-4.25.a, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
Under Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second. Discussion. Under discussion, what I was envisioning Commissioner Fix is that under Resolution A is where all the proclamations are, but I would like to go through those presentations. We still have a few minutes before we run out of time here.
All right. So the first one is for Peace Officers Memorial Day. Sheriff, if you and your guys want to come up? Any other peace officer in the building?
No, I don't have a question. No, I won't.
This is an affirmation recognizing Peace Officers Memorial Day 2023. Our public safety officers work tirelessly to protect our citizens, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods safe. And every day, peace officers face the threat of violence and danger, and they routinely put their lives in line to defend ours, and the price of that bravery may result in disability or death. And the 2023 observance of Peace Officers Memorial Day will help honor our law enforcement officers, their extraordinary service and sacrifice, and we remember the fallen heroes whose selfless acts have left behind safer streets and stronger communities. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners do hereby formally declare Monday, May 15, 2023, to be Peace Officers Memorial Day 2023. We call upon everyone throughout Fairfield County to recognize the invaluable contribution of peace officers to uphold justice, enforce the rule of law, and protect the innocent. Thank you, gentlemen, for your interference.
Come on, Dave. Let's get to games.
Yeah, I'm driving.
All right, we'll take two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So I have Lieutenant Johnson from the Air Force. We have Sergeant Keegan and Private Payne from the Army. We have P M one to R L in the U S Navy for Texas. So all three of these are similar, so I'm just going to read one. But we want to make sure that we thank our military folks on military, about military awareness. So, May is Military Awareness Month. The freedom, security, and preserve liberties that citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the bloodshed and continued vigilance given by the United States Armed Forces and the sacrifices made by them and their family members that support them over the history of our great nation. And the United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling on all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of all of our armed services who have served and are now serving our country together with their families. And one of the May was selected for this display of patriotism because during this month, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, Military Specialist Appreciation Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare May 2003 to be Military Awareness Month throughout Fairfield County and encourages all citizens to join the board in showing our gratitude for past and present military personnel. Thank you very much. You guys, thank you. Keep thinking. You should go on. You should go on. You're part of this, aren't you?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, we have supervised visitation. Amanda Chris from the Visitation Center and your gang that I rode up in the elevator with. While they're coming up here, I'll read this. Children and their parents should have safe, healthy time with one another, even when there are underlying issues. The support we give children and families during times of crisis creates trust and allows parental bonds to be formed. Parenting time is crucial to a child's well-being, yet many times, children and parents are affected by domestic violence, mental health issues, substance abuse, which prevents them from interacting safely with one another. And strong families are the key to promising future for everyone. And the mission of the Fairfield County Visitation Center is to provide supervised visitation and monitored exchanges to adults and children that are affected by underlying issues. Through provision of a safe, secure, comfortable environment, the focus is to grow up family engagement and safe, healthy, meaningful adult-child relationships. During National Supervised Visitation Awareness Month, we renew our commitment to children and families by providing a safe haven of support to break the cycle of violence and encouraging healthy parent-child relationships. I'm going to read this website. For the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners, it's hereby formally declared to respect and recognition of May as Supervised Visitation Awareness Month, where it's all Fairfield County residents to recognize that safe parenting time is vital, and continuing to foster these relationships is extremely important in our meeting. Very glad to say this, all that you do.
One, two, three. One, two.
We have Public Assistance Fraud Awareness Month, Prosecutor's Office and JFS. If you guys could come up. Preventing and detecting public assistance fraud is a responsible effort, bringing awareness to how fraud costs all of us in the community. And in 2022, Job and Family Services received $148,246 in fraud incidents and investigating 852 fraud referrals, more than half a million dollars collected. The collaborative of Job and Family Services and the County Prosecutor's Office led to the successful prosecution of 13 public assistance fraud cases. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare May 2003 to be Public Assistance Fraud Awareness Month throughout Fairfield County. We urge residents to report suspected public assistance fraud by calling Fairfield County Job and Family Services at the Fraud Hotline. We recognize the exemplary collaborative efforts in investigating referrals and prosecuting cases. With this proclamation, we bring awareness to the fact that fraud and public assistance costs all of us in the community. Thank you all very much for your work.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have Mental Health Month. Marcy and your team, if you could come on up. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives as mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nations, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. With effective treatment and tools, individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. All right. And each business school, governmental agency, healthcare provider organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems has the responsibility to support prevention efforts and to promote mental health awareness. Therefore, the Fairfield County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month. Fairfield County Board of Commissioners calls upon citizens, businesses, schools, and public and private institutions in Fairfield County to recommitting to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, protecting mental health, and providing appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you all very much. You do.
Two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you all. Foster Care and Adoption Recognition Month, JFS. Where the Children's Bureau has identified May as National Foster Care Month with the theme "Strengthening Minds, uplifting families." And there were 15,032 children in foster care and 7,639 foster homes in Ohio at the end of 2022. Fairfield County currently has 30 agency foster homes providing services for 26 of our children needing foster placement. In addition, we have 44 children in network foster care homes, showing 70 children in foster care. We have 67 additional children in our custody needing placement services and receiving kinship care and 27 in the temporary custody of kinship while working with the agency. And foster homes in Fairfield County allow for children to remain in their communities and connected to schools, services, and relatives. And the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare May to be Foster Care, Adoption, Recognition, and Recruitment Month throughout Fairfield County. We urge all residents to recognize and thank foster parents, kinship care providers, and adoptive parents. Further, we want to hear from individuals who are interested in fostering or adopting a child. For information, call this number and ask to speak with someone on the foster care team. Thank you all very much.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
We have Old Americans Month. It's Anna Tobin here today.
She's on Wheels. Sorry, should I?
Okay. Well, we're looking for her. Travel and Tourism Week, Jeanette Haberfield from Fairfield County.
A couple of board members would be today, too. And I left our new visitor guide right here if anybody wants one.
Thanks. Yeah, just give me one minute. We're going to do this one. Come on up. Whereas the purpose of National Tourism Week is to celebrate the contributions and accomplishments of the U.S. travel community, and the annual tradition brings in, the annual tradition brings industry professionals together to highlight the value of travel and consider the broad impact it holds for communities across the country, and members of the community are coming together to support travel and tourism for Fairfield County. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare to respect for and recognition of May 7 through the 13th, 2023, as National Travel and Tourism Week. We call upon everyone in Fairfield County to observe this month with programs and activities that increase awareness to support travel and tourism in Fairfield County. And there's a website and a phone number. Visit one of our covered bridges, beautiful parks, and museums and invite a friend. Thank you all for what you're doing to bring people in Fairfield County. Bye.
Two, three. One, two, three. I thought that.
All right. And the final group we have today, please, is Older Americans Month. This is for Meals on Wheels. Whereas Meals on Wheels of Fairfield County includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences and engagement with all generations. And Meals on Wheels of Fairfield County is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledge their many valuable contributions to society. And Meals on Wheels, older adult alternatives of Fairfield County can cancel lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners do hereby formally proclaim May 2023 to be Older American Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. Thank you, ladies. Let's get you in. Come on, Dave.
One, two, three. One, two. Thank you, ladies.
Now, back to your regular program.
Yeah, so where we were in the regular meeting is we have a motion pending for passage of resolutions, commissioners' resolutions A, B, C, D, E, and F. We have a second. We are under discussion. Any further discussion prior to a vote on those resolutions?
It's just that, you know, what we did today shows the depth and breadth of people in our community who are really making a difference. All, we kind of had to move through it quickly, but it's all really substantial.
It is. And commissioners have tried to find ways over the years in words and actions to demonstrate our support for all the organizations that we recognize today. Particularly, I'm going to say with respect to law enforcement, our support for law enforcement is unwavering. Care what you see in the news or where you see it, not here. Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motions passed three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023-4.25.g, a resolution approving the reappointment of Mr. Robert Maynard to the Fairfield County Port Authority.
Under Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, I move items G and H.
Second. Discussion, Rick? You know, picking along with a pretty strong board. Further discussion?
Yeah, so in our packet, there's a really great picture of Rick. Yeah. Accepting the Ohio University Lancaster Community Partner of the Year Award for the Fairfield County Workforce Development Center. So that partnership remains strong. We had an opportunity to thank Jared Tudor late last week for his time at O U L. Wish him well in his time coming up with Hockin College. I guess he's there already. But looking forward to a continued strong partnership with O U L. Thank you, Rick, for all you're doing over there.
Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motions passed three zero. From Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-4.25.i, a resolution to appropriate structural easement for highway purposes from parcel number 011-00550-16 for the Dozer Road Culver replacement project.
The Fairfield County Engineer, I move items I, J, K, L, and M.
Second. Discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motions passed three zero. For Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council, Resolution 2023-4.25.n. This resolution has some wording in it that is incorrect. I'm going to read it into the minutes, and it will be in the minutes corrected. A resolution for a grant agreement between the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners as its administrative agent for the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services as the administrative entity for Ohio Children's Trust Fund.
Under Family, Adult, and Children First Council, I move items N and O.
Second. Discussion? Please call and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey? A resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Child Protective Services Division, and Dimensional Phases Group Home 2.
The Job and Family Services, I move items P, Q, R, S, T, U, and V.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motions passed 3-0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2023-4.25.W. A resolution for release of funds and certification for federally funded projects within the Fairfield County Community Development Block Grant allocation and neighborhood revitalization programs of Fairfield County, BF221AV1.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2023-4.25.W. A resolution for release of funds and certification for federally funded projects within the Fairfield County Community Development Block Grant allocation and neighborhood revitalization programs of Fairfield County, BF221AV1.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-4.25.X. A resolution authorizing the approval of an advance from the General Fund to fund $2,593 concealed handgun license.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-4.25.X. A resolution authorizing the approval of an advance from the General Fund to fund $2,593 concealed handgun license.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2023-4.25.Y. A resolution authorizing the release and satisfaction of mortgage on a PY2018 Rehab Construction Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program for Stacy Holland.
Second. Discussion?
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2023-4.25.Y. A resolution authorizing the release and satisfaction of mortgage on a PY2018 Rehab Construction Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program for Stacy Holland.
Second. Discussion?
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. On payment of bill, Resolution 2023-4.25.Z. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments, the D Board of Commissioners' approval.
Second. Discussion? Please call or roll.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Lepes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
So the Commissioners, following a brief recess, will proceed with public comments, make an update, county administration, the balance of our traditional review session. Again, we thank you for your patience and courtesy with us in adjusting our schedule a little bit today. The Commission will be at recess for five minutes, and then we will return to the schedule as I've been provided. This time, the Commission sets aside an opportunity for voters or taxpayers to address the Commission. We do have a three-minute timeline, which we would appreciate your courtesy on. If you would like to address the Commission, please begin by stating your name and residential address. Our public speakers are permitted and encouraged to speak from the podium and keep your voice up so that folks online can hear your remarks as well as folks who are in the room. Good morning, sir.
Morning. My name is Ray Steeman, 2444 West Point Druid, Lancaster, Ohio. And what I want to say this morning is very brief in a way. I'm old enough now that about a month, a little more than a month, I'll be 90. I haven't been able to use the services of the adult seniors and so forth like a lot of others, but I appreciate that because I know it's there if I ever need it. So far, I've been staying away. One thing that I've looked at in these years that I've been living, the changes that I have seen are beyond my imagination when I was given. Buck Rogers was being mentioned after, the young person. But we're past that stage. But I do want to say one thing. All the organizations throughout the years, this country and other countries, their government started out right in most cases. But we seem to get going and busy, and we forget why we're here. Because we're created to worship the Creator, not ourselves. That's what has fallen. If you listen to Tucker Carlson, who was fired by Fox News, he wound it up pretty good when he said, "Everyone needs to take time out during a day and pray to our Creator." For 10 minutes, 10 minutes of our time to the God that created. So with that, I won't take 10 minutes, but I will pray. Father God, help us to look to you and take time out to walk with you throughout our days. Help us, Lord, to grow in that relationship with you, knowing you better today than we did yesterday, and look forward to tomorrow. Help us to recognize who your Son is and why he came. And we praise you and thank you that he came to die on that cross for each of us and take our sins, which we all have, and take them from us and allow us to join Jesus in our walk daily. Amen.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else would like to address the Commission at this time?
Morning. I'm actually from West Pointville, Ohio. My name is Yancy Shaw. I'm with the Labor's District Council, 152 Dorchester Square. I am here to represent the workers for the Eastern Cocktail Project. We are a labor's organization, and, you know, I know you guys have been told all about how much the tax benefits and all this are for the county if it goes through and everything. We wanted to give you another side of what the workers are actually like. We have 137 members that actually live in your county here. A lot of times, people say, well, they're just part-time jobs, you know, but our people make 30-year careers out of these jobs. It's to last about a year and a half to two years possibly. We'll have 150 people out here working. They'll make, you know, their scale's $34 an hour plus fringes, so really good-paying jobs. A little bit about EDF. EDF is the developer. They have signed an agreement with us for all of their projects in the state of Ohio with us, the carpenters and electricians. And we're working two projects with them right now. The largest one is in Madison County. And just a little note for the engineer, we're working on 11 projects, and I think across the state. And Madison County Engineer talks highly of Latner as far as how they're, you know, taking care of the project and everything, which they'll be the ones, you know, performing work for EDF. So when it gets farther along, we'd love to work with you guys possibly to do a job there, maybe get more of the county people working here. You know, Ohio's busy as far as construction goes, and, you know, it's a great opportunity for people to make a career and get a start. So, you know, that's just our take on it. You know, we wanted to come and talk about the workers, you know, so everyone would know there is a good side to that. So if you get any questions, I'll stick around, but thank you. Appreciate your time, sir.
If anyone else would like to address the Commission at this time?
My name's Eric Murray. I'm a business representative for Local 18, kind of all of these labor, covering heavy equipment operators for these jobs also. These jobs provide a lot of work for women and men in this community, and they help provide with a lot of tax revenue and stuff like that. So just a little speech. 1188 Dublin Road, Columbus, Ohio is where our office is. On behalf of the operating engineers, Local 18, I am here to support the approval of the Eastern Cocktail Solar Project. The operating engineers are the individuals who operate heavy equipment such as bulldozers, excavators, baccos, forklifts, and so on. The roads and bridges you drove on were most likely built by members of Local 18 along with fellow union trade men. Thus, providing our membership with numerous employment opportunities and turn high-paying wages, health care benefits, apprenticeship programs can continue to grow and become of the solar industry. If approved, the Eastern Cocktail Solar Project will not only create jobs, but you can expect an economic impact, additional tax money, and clean energy for Ohio as a result from the project. We encourage the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners to support the jobs of the men and women of Local 18 by approving the Eastern Cocktail Solar Project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If anyone else would like to address the Commission at this time? On behalf of the Commissioners, we thank you all for coming and again express our appreciation for your courtesy, given some of the schedule changes that we needed to have today. The next item on our agenda is the Administrative Update, abbreviated, however you deem appropriate.
Gosh. Shoot, I said. Briefly, a few weeks ago, Commissioner, you asked about whether or not there could be any changes to the future. I believe you, from the research that I conducted, there has not been any. It's exactly the same situation. Does agree.
Thank you. And thank you for looking into that. All right. We will proceed with the Administration Update. American Rescue Plan Update, 30.6 received, million 23.7 has been appropriated, 12.6 is expended, 3.5 encumbered or obligated. The federal report for this order has been filed. That would have been due April, at the end of April. Commissioner Fix took a little of the thunder, but we want to congratulate Rick in the Workforce and Economic Development Center and all of those folks for their Community Partner of the Year Award. Everybody's really proud of that and of the work that Rick and his staff do at the Workforce Center. It's amazing, and we thank you for that. So our Commissioners' meeting, once again, will be next Tuesday at 1:00 PM so that Commissioners can attend the MCJDC Annual Meeting. Couple of updates related to the House Budget Bill. Indigent Defense is looking like it might come in at a reimbursement level at 78% if everything remains the same with the current proposed bill. The local government fund increase, it looks like that it might end up being actually a decrease based upon some of the tax implications that are being considered. So there is a proposal to probably try to increase that percentage from 1.7% to 2.5%. I don't know if anybody else, like Commissioner Fix, would have anything to add into that.
Yeah, so I had a chance to catch up with State Representative Ray yesterday, and he's been, he's been doing a great job representing Fairfield County in the budget talks and counties in general. The indigent defense, I believe, the current version that will be voted on and sent to the Senate includes a set dollar amount that would equal 100% of our spend statewide in 2022 and a cap so that that number can't bounce around and we can't get back down to the 88% or 80% or whatever the numbers usually end up being. So that's really good news. The 911, which was a priority, funding is back in the budget and will proceed to the Senate that way. Local government funds, the last conversation we had was that he is working to find a way to get us above zero, zero being the baseline that we had in 2022 and for years past. Because they cut income taxes so significantly, the pool is smaller, so the 1.7% of the smaller pool would be smaller dollars for us. So he's trying to find a way to get us back above zero. I don't know what that looks like yet, but he's working on it.
Also included within the budget bill is funding for the Fairfield County Workforce Center. Currently, $4,280,000 is listed for fiscal year 2024. That could be distributed to Fairfield County to support building improvements, equipment purchases, and operating expenses. Another good bit of news, competitive bidding threshold currently looking to increase that statutory bidding threshold to $75,000 for 2024 with the threshold increasing 3% annually thereafter. Also, looking to increase the allowable difference between estimates for public improvement from 10% to 20%. So that is also some good news that is out there that could potentially help us in bidding for our public improvements.
I could just mention one other thing on the budget. I know that Representative Ray worked really hard to get a chunk of money for Fairfield Medical Center. I don't know the details of that, but when I spoke to Jack Janoso last Friday, he was very, very appreciative of Representative Ray's work. And as the largest employer in Fairfield County, we're definitely appreciative of anything that the state government can do to help keep Fairfield Medical Center thriving.
Budget review.
After discussing the county's investments, the Investment Advisory Committee did increase the estimated revenue from $3 million to $5 million over this last week, also with sales tax revenue. The revenue numbers for May came in about a total of 3% and higher than the previous year. Of that, non-auto was up about 9%, and auto was down about 17% over 2022, limited results. Brown, anything on revenue estimates? I'm not asking for a change. I'm giving you an opportunity.
It's already been changed. The $2 million has been added. It's $61.5 million for the General Fund, and that's about 36% of the estimates as of April 19th been received. Very close. It's closer than it's ever been, but I think it's an appropriate estimate.
Thank you very much. Or please continue.
Hey, recognition. Mayor Henderson from the Village of Pleasantville thanks Chief Hutton and John Coaches for their assistance and dedication to Pleasantville during the recent weather event. The mayor stated that for a small village with limited resources, these events are heavy lift and would be impossible for the village to manage, but for the support, knowledge, and dedication of those individuals mentioned, thank you for your continued support and dedication for you and your teams, John, from the mayor. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Carter Corcoran, Chris Wagner, and Robin Ballthizer for answering the call from Jackie Tripp to participate in a video for the EAP. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the GIS team for supporting Morpsy and gathering data about Fairfield County, developing a new fire hydrant data for the 911 project. And County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the Volunteers for Earth Day, Destination Downtown Cleanup Day, BBS Bull-a-thon, hope I got that right, and the Decorative Arts Center for various events over the past weekend. Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Just want to say thanks to everybody that was volunteering over the weekend. It was a very big volume of volunteers and a lot of different activity, and it was nice to see all the volunteers out.
Calendar review and invitations received. Michelle?
All right. Commissioner Lepes is currently on his way to celebrating Dolly Parton's Imagination Library of Ohio at the governor's residence. Also today, the Commissioners have the Transportation Improvement District Special Meeting at 1:00 at the Record Center and the Kim Debit Retirement Open House at 4:30 down at the Ale House 1890. Morpsy World Forum on Mobility is tomorrow at 10:00 AM at the Workforce Center. OSU Extension Real Money Real World Program with Treasurer of State Robert Sprague is April 28th, and that time has been changed to 9:00 AM. MCJDC Board of Trustees Meeting and Joint Board of Commissioners is at 9:00 and 10:30 on the 2nd. Citizens of Fairfield's Educational Meeting, April 29th at 9:00 AM at Miller's Port United Methodist Church. Family Fund Fest hosted by Fairfield County Job and Family Services is May 10th from 5:00 to 6:30. Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program hearing, first hearing is May 9th at 11:00. Second hearing, May 30th at 10:15. Both hearings located in this room. For correspondence, we have the Imagine Newsletter from Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. That is their April newsletter. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown, County Auditor. April 20th is the date. Subjects, Board of Revision Cases, the Owner Occupancy Credit, Budget Update, and save the dates, including this Heritage District Tour on June 24th and 25th. Community Housing Impact and Preservation Committee hearing, first hearing is May ninth at eleven, second hearing, May thirtieth at ten-fifteen. Both hearings located in this room. For correspondence, we have the Imagine Newsletter from Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, that is their April newsletter, a memo from Dr. Carrie Brown, County Auditor. April twentieth is the date. Subjects, Board of Revision Cases, the Owner Occupancy Credit, Budget Update, and save the dates including this Heritage District Tour on June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We have information regarding the 2023 mosquito control contracts from Health Commissioner Evil. The press release from Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council dated April eighteenth titled Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council awarded three thousand for perinatal cluster initiative. An email regarding solar projects containing internet links to videos from a resident and a Fairfield County Visitation Center's org-driven campaign letter titled May is Supervised Visitation Awareness Month. That's it.
Thank you. Anything further? That's all. Is there any old business that anybody would like to bring the attention of the Commission? First of all, Commissioner Fix, under Old Business. Thank you. Under New Business, I'm looking forward to welcoming Rick. Will you be in the rural mobile thing? Yes. Tomorrow. So I saw the revised agenda that came out today. I appreciate that revision. So I'll be there and
Taking us off.
Share some remarks.
I'll be sticking around to talk about the Workforce Center and journalize.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Fix, any new business?
So we have the Transportation Improvement District meeting today. Region eighteen, one Ohio is tomorrow. Township Association meeting is Thursday. That is not mine.
I've received nineteen invitations to that. Have you?
To the Township Association?
Yeah.
So I will give our Township trustee, Deramon Hall, who's the president of Township Association, some credit for being extremely aggressive and trying to get attendance at that meeting.
Yes. I mean, literally. Nineteen? Yes.
This has a special place and it's hard for you.
We're still under New Business and we have some elected officials with us today. When, Dr. Brown, anything you'd like to share?
In what revision count as of today, there are twenty-six cases to hear that are pending with no action on them. We will, we will conclude by the end of May and almost always before noon on the dates that we are scheduled for those particular hearings. They're going well and there's good educational opportunities within the hearings themselves too. And also in the New Business, we have from the National Archives, a copy of the petition from the settlers in what is called the Waters of the King of the Sauda River. The first settlers in Fairfield County, we have copies of this that we've transcribed so that you can read the names and see the names and you'll recognize many names within Fairfield County area now. And we are going to have five different stations during the Heritage District Tour and one of the stations will focus on this National Archive, which I have brought copies if you want some.
David Lepsey's name is not on that list, is it?
It is not, but he asked me to, the next time we were engaged, the National Archives for some things in Miller's Port relating to the history there. We will, anytime we have opportunity to see that. But it is very interesting and it's nice to add that as one of the educational stations for the Heritage Tour.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Also have Kurt Brand Meyer with us today. How are you today? Anything you'd like to share?
Just again, express my thanks to the Commissioners and John and the facilities team for for working with the Fairfield Center. We still have a little, small, some small things left to finish up there, but staff is happy, the customers are happy, so it's a nice relocation for the title.
So if I might, I noticed this weekend that there was a pretty significant line at the BMV in the old location and I'm wondering how that's, you know, I know you were concerned that there were people who would be there that would need to come see you and go back there and how has that transpired?
It's, it's been rough, but I know that we, we have a good relationship with Deputy Register at the BMV and he gives out little cards with our address and we would say, so, you know, it's only three miles down the road, but it is a little inconvenient, you know, when they have to go, for instance, an out-of-state inspection to the BMV, then to us and then back. So there is some back and forth and we just keep telling people that hopefully in the future, the BMV will be located right next door to us. So we're working through it, but it is a little
Pardon my language, everybody. Any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring your attention to the Commission at this time? And now, things over. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second. All those are very recintive, I, I, I post them, sign. Motion carries. The Commission is adjourned and we thank you all for coming. Thank you.